All right, Leon, if you wanna roll it, we'll get the process.
Hey, Ross.
Ask her what the password is. Just kidding. That is. All right. Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of June seventeen, two thousand and twenty four. Call this meeting to order, and we'll please rise if you're able to for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Chess.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Rin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four, there was a closed session this evening, and there's nothing to report out from that. Go on to presentations. Item five point one is a proclamation declaring June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Pleasant Hill. We will be doing a more formal presentation at our Juneteenth event this coming Wednesday, so hopefully you all will be out there for all the festivities and the formal presentation, but I would like to read the proclamation for those who are viewing at home and unable to attend here in person. Whereas on July first, I'm sorry, January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the celebrated Emancipation Proclamation, declaring free the three point five million enslaved African Americans in the Confederate States. And slavery did not cease until June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, more than two and one half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, when General Gordon Granger and his troops rode into Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of the Civil War and the insidious institution of slavery. Whereas his commemoration of the end of slavery, Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day or Freedom Day, is the oldest African American holiday observed in the United States, celebrating the abolition of slavery and emancipation of enslaved African Americans on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. In two thousand and two, the state of California passed legislation officially recognizing the third Saturday of each June as Juneteenth National Freedom Day to celebrate African Americans' significant role in the history of the United States and society through their steadfast commitment to freedom, brotherhood, and equality. In two thousand and twenty-one, Juneteenth became a federal holiday which the city of Pleasant Hill recognizes. The national theme of Juneteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, is their wildest dreams, which will honor and celebrate the history of African American ancestors and highlights accomplishments. Whereas flying the city's Juneteenth flag at City Hall on June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four further symbolizes that Pleasant Hill commemorates the anniversary of Juneteenth in recognition and celebration of the great contributions African Americans have made to our city, state, and country. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Matthew Rin, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, on behalf of the Pleasant Hill City Council, do by hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in the city of Pleasant Hill, and encourage all residents to participate in the celebration of Juneteenth, Juneteenth. And hope to see you once again.
Yes, that's.
I'll move on to item five point two, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Flaherty for the introduction of the Architectural Review Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor Rin. As you know, Councilmember Alan Vincent and I act as the Interview and Nominating Subcommittee of the full council, and we have the pleasure of interviewing folks who are interested in being appointed to commissions. We have a huge population of talented individuals, and tonight I want to introduce two of our newest appointments to the Architectural Review Commission. Bring up DePenti, uh, more, Kapoor first. Hello, DePenti. DePenti has been serving a, an abbreviated term on the Architectural Review Commission, appointed last October, and just reappointed now for her first four-year term. DePenti is currently designer for Chrysler and Associates. She's a registered architect in India where she practiced for several years and has been working in California for the past eight. Her experience includes landscape design and residential projects. During her brief time on the commission, DePenti has proved herself to have valuable insight and input on projects brought before the commission, and we're delighted that she's here to serve for a full four-year term. Welcome, DePenti.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Okay. Well, thank you for your volunteerism, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. I can, I hope to continue to do it. Thank you.
Great. Next up is a woman who has a last name that I think will be recognized, Stephanie Weir. Stephanie is not a stranger to Pleasant Hill. She's lived here for, well, longer than she has been alive, thirty-one years, and her family's been here since nineteen fifty-nine. Stephanie started out in residential and commercial interior design and an instructor at San Francisco State in architectural hand drafting and space planning. She currently manages a portfolio of real estate that includes over a hundred facilities for a multi-state company. Stephanie, we're delighted to have you, and the podium is yours.
Yeah, I'm just grateful to be here and serve the city that I grew up and have been here all my life, so thank you all.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Vincent and Flaherty for your service on the interview and committee. We've had quite a few interviews going on lately and quite a bit of your time, and we appreciate some great candidates have come forward, so thank you for that. We'll move on to item six, which is our city manager comments. I'd like to invite our city manager, Ethan Binder-Nigle, to provide his comments this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Rin. Councilmembers, thank you. A couple of announcements for you this evening. As was alluded to earlier, the Pleasant Hill Diversity Commission is inviting the community to come to City Hall this Wednesday, June nineteenth, from five to nine P M for our second annual Juneteenth celebration. Juneteenth, also known as, pardon me, June nineteenth, also known as Juneteenth, is recognized as the day slavery was finally abolished here in the United States. And to celebrate that momentous day, the commission is holding its event near the City Hall Lake, which this year on Wednesday also coincides with City's Off the Grid event, so there will be plenty of cuisines to choose from. There will also be performers, activities, and the music of the West African High Life Band, so we encourage all of you to come down and join us Wednesday from five to nine. Regarding other events coming up this weekend, on Sunday, the twenty-third, at six o'clock, the Sunset by the Lake Summer Concert Series continues with a performance by Bo Funk featuring Michael Jeffries. Bo Funk is one of the many bands in a fantastic lineup selected by Civic Action Commission. A unique feature of this Sunday's concert will be the presence of a vintage vehicle called the Metropolitan. The Greater Bay Area Metropolitan Club will feature a half dozen of these somewhat unique autos on Trelaney and a stroll along, and you can take a look at all these interesting autos and then grab some food at this week's Taste of the World food trucks, which include El Gran Taco Loco, Dad's BBQ, and of course, the Guzzler. The CAC's website features all the information on this summer's concert series. You can visit PleasantHillsummerconcerts.com for more information. Lastly, wanted to make a public service announcement that Community Service Day is gearing up for its twentieth annual Community Service Day Saturday, September twenty-first, and to make sure there are plenty of projects for volunteers, the city has begun and continues to look for potential projects. Those with a project in mind that they'd like to lead, they can fill out a form on the city's website at PleasantHillsca.org/csd. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And my colleagues, have any questions of our city manager?
September twentieth?
Saturday, the twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Thank you. I was just putting in my calendar. I was like, twentieth? It's Friday. Okay, thank you.
We're getting warmed up on the Friday.
Yeah, I'm, just wanna make sure I got it in. Thanks.
All right. Great. And no questions of our city manager. We'll close item six and move on to item seven. Seven point one is reports from council members on meetings or conferences attended at city expense. A few of us attended the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference hosted by the city of Pittsburgh, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any of you would like to confirm your attendance there or any comments about that that night? Okay, all right. So go ahead if you want to take it.
I was there. It was a speech from our county librarian, and so many of us know a lot about the, what the county library has been doing, and so it was interesting to get an update and where other new or renovated libraries were going on in the county, so.
And not that we're ultra-competitive, but I verified that we still are the most active and involved Pleasant Hill Library. Number one, buy a landslide still for activities, so keep up the great work to all of our librarian staff. Any other events attended at city expense that you guys liked? I can report that I also attended the mayor's conference in the city of Pittsburgh and enjoyed the presentation by the county librarian. And just very enjoyable. Nice. Very nice venue, too. The California Theater is where it was. Great. California Theater followed by a meal at someplace across the street. No, the Community Center. Catered by Zandana Laker. There you go. Sounds good.
Popcorn.
They gave popcorn out. They gave out the metal straws, water containers, all sorts of unnecessary tchotchkes. Like going to a convention, all kinds of stuff. All right, and I believe Councilmember Chess, you're in attendance as well?
Yeah. Hard to add any more color.
Yeah, you can't just add to. All right. For the sake of everyone, we'll move on from seven point one. And we'll go to seven point two, general announcements from council members. Start to my left, and we'll start with Councilmember Vincent.
Thank you. I believe all of us attended the Sunset Concert by the Lake featuring the music of Van Gogh. Councilmember Flaherty and I were, council members representing the council at the local government academy. We spent the evening with Chief Vermillion, or the police department, and Ann James, who were in the corporation yard. It was actually very interesting. I had never been all the way around either one of those. I enjoyed the evening. The participants seemed to be really involved in it, and Councilmember Flaherty had a number of questions.
Thank you. I need to follow up. I do want to compliment the chief and Ms. James on the presentations they both had showcasing their department. It was incredibly well received by the audience, and I learned a lot from both of you during the presentation, so very much appreciate the extra mile that you all and your entire team went to really do incredible presentation to all the work that your departments do for the best of the city. Thank you. I'll go to Vice Mayor Noack for your report.
So the week before that, I was at the local government academy, and we were at the library, which is appropriate for me to be at. And Ann was there as well doing engineering, and Ling gave a fairly in-depth discussion on I T and A I, so that was interesting. Of course, a lot of it went over my head, but anyway, it was, they seemed to be quite interested in all he had to say, so that was great. And Mayor's Conference already set, and Sunset in the Park, so ditto to a lot of these things.
Great. Councilmember Flaherty, did you have any further things to add? Oh, I could, but I think I'll pass, and I yield my time to Councilmember Chess. Councilmember Chess, the clock is on.
Yeah, I really, Councilmember Vincent kind of captured my attendance, but looking forward to the, the academy this Thursday, attending that this Thursday.
Great. Fantastic. The only thing different that I attended this last weekend, Martinez hosted the, their annual King of the County barbecue competition, and unfortunately, somebody had to do it, but I was a judge for the barbecue and had to, you know, try chicken and ribs and some other things that they were doing out there, but it was a great event, so kudos to Martinez and that festival they ran at the marina down there, so, and thank you for including me. All right, moving on to item, want you to need to time back, Councilmember Flaherty? Just kidding. All right, we'll go to public comment. Public is welcome at this time to address the city council on items on the consent calendar or other items not listed on the agenda but within the council's jurisdiction. There'll be an opportunity to comment on other agenda items at the time they're discussed. Comments are limited to two minutes per speaker. You may provide comment cards, speaker cards, I'm sorry, to Leon at the dais over here, and she'll collect those. I have two already, so if there's any others floating around, hand those in. And we'll start with our first comment. And the first card I have is for Martha Dunham. Do you want to come on up? Hi, good evening. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Martha Dunham. I'm a homeowner here in Pleasant Hill. I've lived in Sherman Acres for forty years. I put some material in front of you that shows some photographs, so there are two items of concern. One is the rather deplorable condition of the median strip on Monument as you go and turn left into Sherman Acres or right into Coles. We have all, I used to come home and see crepe myrtle trees and agapanthus and lilies, and now it's all weeds. They, the trees died. I don't know if the water went out, but it really is a crying shame that, that the condition of those median strips, and I don't know what's going on with the budget, but all of us in Sherman Acres, including everyone I've spoken with is really concerned, and we kept hoping something good would happen, but nothing has. It's just ugly and makes us feel like, gee, we're on the wrong side of the freeway here because it's, it's not a welcoming and beautiful thing anymore, so I hope somehow word gets to Public Works and that's addressed. Secondly, I've been trying to come ever since I read the article on the Monument Overpass being the third most dangerous overpass or bridge in the state of California since that article was published in two thousand and sixteen. How it was built in nineteen ninety-eight without the proper oversight from Caltrans. I know it was federally funded. I do not know, but I sit under it every day, and it's the entrance to Pleasant Hill, and I am hopeful that somehow it captures the attention of the city council so that the, this dangerous hazard can be addressed. And that's the gist of my comments, and I encourage you to review the material and hopefully get back to me on the landscaping issue as well as putting some pressure on perhaps some of the funding for infrastructure could be diverted to the Monument Overpass. Thank you very much.
And I think the appropriate person was taking notes feverishly as that was happening, so hopefully we'll see some situation on that, and then I believe there's a future project with that freeway overpass that's being in the works with some other agencies right now. I don't know if our, not to catch our city manager on the spot here, if he wants to comment on any of the future projects that are being discussed, or we'll have future updates.
Actually, perhaps as part of the C I P presentation later this evening, I don't know.
Oh, see. Yeah, we can. Part of our presentation.
Not the, not the overpass, the.
The, I believe it's a bicycle pedestrian surface-related treatment, but again.
The, the, the overpass, I will take note of. I sit on C C T A and M T C, so I will take note of that.
Do you want to let her know what that alphabet soup means?
C C T A is Contra Costa Transportation Authority, and M T C is Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which is the nine Bay Area counties. So I sit on both those, one representing Central County and the other representing the entire county on M T C.
Great. Thank you for your comments. And the next speaker card, David. How are you? Welcome back. Come on down.
After three months, the last time I was here, I was escaping the cold because the power was out.
And now.
Things are a little different.
And the rains are gone for the moment.
Right, the rains are gone. So anyway, I'm addressing the flooding on Patterson and Maze Field again, and I think, I seem to have been caught in a vacuum where the, the engineers have changed, and now things are kind of at a reset, but I wanted to read the last email that I sent that I didn't get a response on, and it, this kind of summarizes the issue that I'm having right now and the, and the situation that I'm in. So let me just quickly read this. I don't think it's two minutes long. But it says, basically, over the last twenty years of damage and continuing fear, I've, number one, shown that the data and conclusions of the original consulting analysis is wrong, and not just a little wrong. So the prioritizing of the city for Patterson is wrong. Two, provided the design fix that would take care of almost any situation, even reducing the impact of a bank overflow. No one has disputed or provided evidence against this. Number three, offered to do a complete proof of concept modification to my outflow to show it works, providing a design and parts list to the city's consultant contractor that can, can review. And number four, offered to fund all consulting, labor, and parts, and plus get approval and access to the neighbor's property to do the whole proof of concept at no cost to the city. I believe this will be less than a hundred thousand dollars. For the proof of concept, the city has to do nothing but give me the contact for the current city contractor. I'll take it completely from there. As a project manager at Verizon, my bill rate was three hundred dollars an hour, so I'm more than qualified. I've handled many multimillion-dollar capital projects. So my question is, what more can I do? What can you recommend? Can I do a presentation? Get the neighborhood petition? Anything. I've preferred working with the city engineers over all this time, but they keep changing just as I think we're ready to move forward. With Anethan, I thought I was less than a week away from getting things started, and then everything changed again. So let's not go another winter, and I'll take any recommendations anybody has.
David, do you mind sharing who you sent that email to so we can follow up with the appropriate staff member?
Sure, I sent it to, to Ann and copied Ryan Cook and Daniel Harbor. I think she's no longer here.
Okay.
And Zach, I think I copied you on that, too.
All right, that gives us enough to go on from there, and we'll, we'll make sure you get a reply. Thank you so much. Do we have any other speaker cards at the moment? These are only two I had for this evening.
There are no more speaker cards.
All right. With that, we'll close public comment and move on to the rest of the agenda. Item nine is our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate council discussions of these items unless requested by a council member prior to the time the council votes on a motion to adopt. May we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Noack and a second by Councilmember Vincent. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Flaherty?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carried. All right. Now the action party. I've all been waiting for it. Action calendar, number ten point one, adopt resolution approving this, the changes to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five master fee schedule. And I believe we have our adminis, our finance administrative analyst, Ross, here with us tonight. Thank you so much for coming, Ross. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Ross Yangwos with the Finance Department for the council members that haven't met me yet. So this section of the meeting is the public hearing for the proposed master fee schedule update for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. For a little bit of background, staff typically submits master fee schedule updates based on a C P I factor, which for two thousand and twenty-four is a two point four percent year-over-year increase at March first. The difference with this year's proposed submission is significant in that the fee updates are based on a user fee study conducted by the city's outside consultant, Willdan Financial Services. We'll be providing a detailed explanation of the user fee study and how the proposed fees were developed. While some fees remain the same or were increased only by the C P I, a large percentage of the fees were increased by a significant amount. Regardless of how the fees are developed, the goal of the fees updates in the master fee schedule is full cost recovery of services provided by the city to its customers. In terms of fiscal impact, staff estimates that if activity levels were to remain consistent using a fiscal year twenty twenty, using fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three actuals as a baseline, the city could realize a revenue increase of roughly two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. To reiterate, the purpose of the fee updates is for full cost recovery and not to increase reserves. Staff is requesting approval of the master fee schedule and resolution as submitted or to provide guidance on fee development. Although staff is submitting the current proposed master fee schedule update based on the user fee study, staff plans to continue submitting future master fee schedule updates based on the C P I, on a C P I, until another fee study is conducted. And now I'm going to introduce you to Tony Thrasher with Willdan Financial Services. Tony, can you please introduce yourself to the city council?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ross. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Tony Thrasher with Willdan Financial. Been with the company for over twelve years now, primarily doing cost allocation plans and user fee studies. So I do have a presentation, so I'm going to try to share my screen now for you. And share this one. And to do the customary check, can you see my screen?
Yep.
All right, okay. Yeah, thank you for your time, so I'll try to make it brief, but I want to make sure to go through all this so you just get an understanding of what we were looking at in its totality for this fee study, because there was a lot. Cities have hundreds of user fee studies, or user fees, sometimes thousands, so what are user fees and what are we looking at? User fees are service, are fees for service to provide a private benefit with limited to no community benefit. As such, state law requirement is that fees be set up to the full cost and not greater than that, and that fee usage be voluntary, either through a request or through the actions such as a requirement of a permit. So the adoption of increased or new fees is done through a public hearing as we're here today, right? And, and it does not include development impact fees, utility rates, taxes, or anything else that's governed by other sorts of legislation. These are purely service-based fees and include the operational costs providing those services. So the reason why you would want to go through a user fee study and understand what those costs are, there's multiple reasons, but most of these services, almost all of them, these are costs that exist within your general fund. And so when you are subsidizing them, you can impact your unobligated funds, and so it can limit the amount of community or general benefit type services you're providing by subsidizing private benefits. And of course, knowledge of what the cost of your services are can then provide you with that, that ability to kind of set policy and where you might want to have cost recovery, and of course, it, as I said in the previous slide, it's required by law so that you know what your full cost is, so you don't set it greater than that. So there's two primary objectives within a fee study. The first is, of course, determine what the cost of your services are, but we start off with going through the schedule as it currently existed to identify any gaps, any overlaps, places where we might need to revise a fee structure, add new fees, remove obsolete fees, so that then, once we get the modifications to the schedule in place, we can then talk to your staff about what it takes to provide those services. They are the subject matter experts. They tell us exactly what it takes to provide services, who's involved, how much time, so that your fees and your full cost calculations are based off of what it takes, your staff and your cost to provide those services. As much as we can, we use fully burdened hourly rates in the calculation along with reasonable time estimates for each task so that we can come up with a full cost on a per-service basis. And then once we know what the cost of services are, we shift into the second phase, which is comparing that to your current fee to identify what type of fee change it would take to get to full cost recovery. And then talking through kind of the hurdles and aspects of those, this, there are suggested fees within the report that you'll see. We didn't identify any fee increases which were seen to be putting you over, say, a comparison to neighbors or what we typically see for the type of services, and so that's why full cost recovery is kind of the design of of the recommendations that you have kind of before you. The scope of the study, I mentioned this is mostly general benefit type costs. It involves pretty much every department has a user fee of some sort, and so kind of everyone's involved. We get to talk to all the departments, all the staffs. They can give their input on what it takes to provide everything. There are a category of citywide fees that are also included. They weren't analyzed or suggested to change. They're kind of just minor ancillary type fees that most cities have. This type of study is very data intensive. We start off with expenditure data, staffing structures, kind of your, your whole identification of who's doing what, your org structure, calculating a productive hours for staff so that we can identify when they're actually on the job providing service to, to your public, and as well as providing time estimates on what it takes to provide those services. So as you can imagine, because we need that much input from your staff, they're involved with every step of the way, so they can see how we're using any data that we receive and how it goes into the calculations to get to a full cost calculation. So they really kind of have to take ownership throughout the entire process because it is your services, and I need, that's part of the state law. It needs to be representative of what it takes for your city to provide those services. I've kind of touched a bit of what this already says is just a graphical representation of what it takes to kind of get through one of these studies, starting off with the model development so we can build up to calculate the fully burdened hourly rates and overhead factors. And then we shift into the cost analysis phase where we then meet with the departments individually, revise the fee schedules so they suit service moving forward, collect that time and cost information for each fee, so then we can come up with a full cost for, for each one. And then we can compare that to where your current fees are, and then provide kind of suggestions along with staff recommendations on suggested fees to bring to yourselves in the public for consideration. The report is created around the final model, and so it's attached within the agenda documents, the long bunch of pages of fees and fees and fees showing the full cost for each and suggested fees, fee changes, subsidy percentages, kind of the full list is kind of in there. There's hundreds of them, right? So it's quite a list to go through on that, and then it all results in a public hearing so that you can hear the results of the study and then make consideration for adoption. Now, just to kind of make some notes about some, the bigger, more important, I'd say, fee changes before I dive into this slide itself. For planning, most fees are increasing, but the average fee change being suggested is a five percent increase, right? So kind of nominal increases within there. For building, the building permit is suggested, suggested to increase by seven point five percent to get to full cost recovery. And there's other flat, kind of just, flat fees that are charged like per hour fees, things of that nature. Those average fee change would be around twenty-five percent, but the bulk of the cost related with building services is the permit, and that's at seven point five percent. For code enforcement, your current fees were actually quite low, and they're not really recovering much of the cost of services, so those would, are suggested to increase by fifty-five percent on average. For engineering, it'd be an average fee change of seven percent. Police would just increase by that C P I two point four percent, which Ross had kind of stated earlier. For clerk, the only change- For clerk, the only change they had would be to reduce the copy fee. Currently, it's like a larger amount for the first page and then another amount for kind of subsequent pages. To put it more in lines with kind of the request for public records of a ten cents per page. And finance would have that same change to ten cents per page. And they also have two decreases and one increase with an average change of nine percent on there. So that's kind of the, the summary of the changes, but again, lots of fees. So some are going up, some are going down, right? But since you haven't done a study in a long time, most fees do go up. And as your kind of general standard, these are private benefit services. So when you are subsidizing, that does impact your general fund. So think of me as a resident paying for my neighbor's addition, things of that nature through my tax dollars as opposed to me being charged for that service directly. There's a number of different ways to kind of think of it, but it's just really boils down to private benefit service versus having, you know, funds to pay for general benefit type stuff. But having said that, I've never worked with the city that doesn't have some level of subsidization in their fees. So you'll see in there, there's a subsidy column that shows percentage, things like appeals, right? There's, there's things in there that do provide more of a, there is, you would consider some sort of kind of general aspect to it or access to a service. So that's where you typically do see those sort of subsidies, less of the development type stuff, right? We do recommend the city use an inflator, as you have in the past. CPI is the most widely used and recognized. And so it'd be just recommendation to continue to kind of do that in between studies. And the general standard is five years to do a full study. Any shorter than that, your staff would hate us. We will, we don't want that either, right? That kind of concludes my study. I'm here to answer any questions you have as well. Staff's also here to answer any questions you might have about the process or, you know, anything, anything kind of comes to mind, right? I have a disclaimer on here just because we provide municipal advisory services. So I'm just making sure we're not doing any of that as part of this. So none of that is in here.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Open up to my colleagues have questions.
I just have one.
Okay, Vice Mayor Noack?
When was the last time we did a full study on our fees? Two thousand two, so it's been a while. So recommendations, try to do one every five years now instead of
Every twenty two.
Every twenty two years? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. My colleagues over here. All right, now we'll open up the public comment. Public is welcome to address the council at this time. I don't see any speaker cards. Speaker cards, it's time for public comment.
I have no speaker cards.
All right, we'll close public comment and we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and a motion. Councilmember Flaherty?
Well, I think it's a good idea. As Councilmember Vice Mayor Noack pointed out, it's been twenty two years since we did this type of in-depth study. It's to recapture the costs of city staff and city services that provide a special benefit to the individuals getting the service from the city. It's intended to be revenue neutral, but at the same time not be a drag on our general fund where we're ending up subsidizing individual homeowners at the expense of, of the general population. So I'm glad we did this. And Budget Committee did have a chance to review this at our last meeting. And I, I don't think we saw any issues with it at the time. Did we?
Is that a motion?
No, it's just a comment. Somebody else might want to say something.
Okay, we'll open it up. Anyone else like to comment?
Since I sit on Budget Committee, I also went through this with him. So have the same thing and just want to encourage us to, to do this more frequently. And I think we, our thought process was to have done this a while ago, but COVID, I think, got in the way. So it's not that we didn't try to do this earlier. So I just appreciate the fact that we are getting this done and, and the purpose is, as Councilmember Flaherty stated, so I, I will make the motion to approve the item.
All right. I'll second it. And a second from Councilman, by the way, as a committee. I have a motion from Vice Mayor Noack and a second from Councilmember Flaherty. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Flaherty?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Ross. I'll let you get the good work and behind the scenes there with our haws and magic happening.
Yeah, they're good.
And Eric's already up, but let me introduce you before we start. How about that, Eric? As you get ready. Item ten point two is adopt a resolution approving the city of Pleasant Hills biannual budget for fiscal years twenty twenty four, twenty five, and twenty twenty five, twenty six. And now I will formally invite our finance manager, Eric, to introduce the item.
Thank you. Good evening to Mayor Rin and to the council. This evening, we are going to go over the city of Pleasant Hills proposed biannual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six. The agenda this evening was supposed to go over the process, talk about city council goals, go over the general fund. We'll cover a couple of other funds. Take any questions or comments that the council may have and hopefully recommendation for adoption of the biannual budget. The budget process actually started off, well, for finance, it started off in, in January. For the rest of staff, we did a couple of department meetings within, actually in the council chambers, going over the, some of the guidelines and, and procedures of how to create the budget. We also met with the Budget Committee back in February to start off the long-term financial plan. We went over some of the assumptions back then. We went over in April, we went over the long-term financial plan with the Budget Committee and then brought it back to City Council back in May to look at the long-term financial plan, which is really a sneak peek of the biannual budget and what you're seeing this evening. Along with that, as we were working with the different departments, one of the things that the city manager wanted to do this year was we, we met with each department individually, trying to make sure that we all understood exactly what it is that each department was spending in salaries and benefits and, and in professional costs and other services costs. The Budget Committee reviewed this a couple of weeks ago in June and bring it forward to you this evening. We also take into account that some of the information from our consultants from HDL. Actually, it's one of the suggestions by Mayor Rin a couple of years ago. We had HDL come to the Budget Committee a couple of weeks ago and they did a presentation of how it is they come up with sales tax information as well. Put all that together and put it forward at the biannual budget that's for, for you this evening. As the council is aware, they approved the city council goals back in March. It's a city that's safe, financially sound, attractive, well-panned, planned and maintained. Provides for high quality of a small town atmosphere for its residents and provides efficient and effective public services. Sorry for being a little small, but taking a look at the current fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, we begin the year around thirteen point eight million. The estimate of about thirty point four million dollars in revenue before our pension unfunded cost of twenty six point six million, we would have a surplus of three point eight. Unfortunately, I still need to write that check to CalPERS for the unfunded liability for about three point nine. A slight deficit of about a hundred thousand dropping to about thirteen point seven million dollars. For the council that recall during the long-term financial plan, when they presented this, there was a twenty thousand dollar difference. We met with HDL a few days after long-term financial plan. We had to revise our sales tax slightly down a, a little bit. Taking a look at fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, about thirty one million dollars in revenue, expenditures of about twenty nine million, not including the person funded liability, surplus of about two point two million. And then we, now we factor in that check that we need to write to CalPERS for about four point six million, which brings us to a deficit of about two point four million, with general fund dropping to about eleven point three. And then the second proposed budget, thirty two million dollars in revenue, thirty million dollars expenditures, surplus of about one point eight. Then we write that check to CalPERS for almost five million dollars, deficit about three million, with general fund dropping to about eight point two. Now, to give you the full picture, I think it's important to, to note that, you know, what happened between the current estimates and the biannual budget? So when we do the, when we do the budget, like I explained during the long-term financial plan, we assume fully staffed. Unless the council gives us a different direction. So what we do, for example, council has given us direction to free certain positions. But at that point, whatever position that we are not frozen, we assume that we are going to hire them at some point in time. HR continues to work at hiring those positions, just like, for example, we, we now have, have a permanent public works director. They are working very hard to continue to find public safety officers as well. So we budget for those positions. I think it's important that what used to be conservative budgeting has changed. And, and my, and the, when I did my first city budget, conservative budgeting meant top step, fully married, full benefits. And that was considered conservative budgeting because the systems back then really couldn't do it, couldn't handle it any easier. The Excel, to be honest, wasn't at that's, at the same level at that point. And the reality is we caught up in time. The reality, that's not really conservative. You know that you have some vacant positions or when you're hiring positions, not everyone is going to be at top step, fully, fully loaded. So for example, even the vacant positions that we do have, you know, I take that range. I assume, well, for example, we'll have one married employee. We might have a plus one. And we might have a single employee and a different gambit of benefits. I don't just assume the top step, top benefit. So we did do a range, but I do assume that we are going to be fully staffed unless you give me direction, direction otherwise. So in the last couple of years, we've obviously have, once we got to year end, the numbers looked a little bit better because we did have vacancy savings. When you have six to eight police officers a vacant for whatever reason, that creates, can create a significant number for vacancy savings. We've also had some revenue improvements. So for example, if we were to do this three or four years ago, it was before the Wayfair Supreme Court decision on sales tax. Well, online sales tax is now part of the number. We had some better revenue numbers as well. But some of those deficits, even in the prior budget, was adjusted for because of either sales tax improvements or expenditure reductions. And it could be true for this as well. I need to at least show the council the full cost of what it is today. Just taking a look at overall about thirty million dollars in total revenue and the, for estimated for this fiscal year, thirty point four, I'm sorry, thirty point four for this fiscal year, thirty one point three million dollars for twenty four, twenty five, and about thirty two million dollars in twenty five, twenty six. Again, about sixty four percent of the pie is represented by property tax and sales tax. Our largest revenue generator, and we'll talk about more about that in a second, is sales tax. And we'll touch on that in a minute. Other taxes and assessments is eighteen percent. Really, that's business license tax at about three million and transit occupancy tax or hotel tax at about two point two. We'll talk about COTs in a minute. Then one thing I want to touch on this slide is the use of money of property. So the original budget was about three hundred thousand. It's going up to about six fifty to six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. As the council probably were, the treasury had to, was adjusting inflation, they increased interest rates. The good thing about increasing interest rates is, you know what I mean? It means our, our savings accounts goes up. The money that we have in the local and fake, local agency investment fund, which most municipalities have their money in. In twenty twenty two, that fund, that savings account was averaging about one point one two percent. In twenty twenty three, it's now three point three seven percent. Doesn't sound high, but it's, it's a two hundred percent increase. And that's significant. Now, if you were to go back in time, it's still, even at three point three seven percent, still near, not anywhere near historical highs for interest. In the eighties, it was closer to ten percent. In the nineties, it was closer to about six percent. And before the dot com recession, it was about four to five percent. Sales tax, again, this is our largest revenue generator. So it went from about nine point two million twenty twenty one. It jumped to eleven point four million twenty twenty two. So that's what we're talking about of some of the things that had happened over time. That Wayfair decision turned on. Online sales increased dramatically. Not to mention, originally, when COVID first happened, that the fear was all revenues across the board was going to drop significantly. As residents were working from home and shopping from home, it actually improved sales tax revenue. So we saw a significant bump. As mentioned, not to mention that also purchasing power, looking for vehicles, that was a bump in twenty twenty two, which continued into twenty twenty three. But by the second half, we started to see it slow down. And that was just the reality. It couldn't keep at that pace of what it was during the COVID year. So we dropped a little bit under eleven million to ten point nine. And then twenty twenty four, what HDL, our consultant, is projecting now is about ten point five million. Couple of factors, as I mentioned, we couldn't maintain that pace of that spending. Two, there's always adjustments. What the state does is it takes a look at sales tax and then it, it does corrections. So for example, we had a couple of corrections in the current fiscal year, which were, was about a couple hundred thousand dollars. So for example, if company XYZ was paying sales tax to City of Pleasant Hill, they do an audit. They said, oh, that should have went to, that should have went to Waller Creek or that should have went to Martinez. They adjust that out over the course of the year. We had a couple of decent sized adjustments this year and that's why you're seeing a drop to ten point five. When HDL, our consultant, does that assumption for next year, they're assuming that adjustment's not going to happen again. Those one-time adjustments aren't going to reoccur because it's now been corrected. Obviously, as, as council is aware, we still have a couple of vacancies due to some of our big box stores closing down. Hopefully that changes. And, and again, the one-time adjustment will come around or won't happen again. So about ten point eight million for fiscal year twenty twenty five and eleven million for twenty twenty six. We are going to have HDL do the presentation, but what we did do is if, if council has a specific question at the end, Ken Nordoff, who is an HDL consultant and a retired city manager, if the council has specific questions, we can address it to him directly. Property tax, again, the second largest revenue, we get about five point, around five point seven cents on every dollar in property tax revenue. It's gone from about seven point seven million in twenty twenty one to about eight point seven twenty twenty three. And then you might see, it basically levels out in twenty twenty four and then it starts increasing in twenty five, about nine million to nine point four million. So why the leveling off? It is, as I kind of mentioned earlier, higher interest rates is good for savings accounts, not great for saving, for buying homes. We've obviously started seeing a cool down in, in regards to home sales. It's not that, that homes in Pleasant Hill are being sold. It's just not at the pace and at the volume it was before interest rates started rising. So it's assuming that cooling down is, is happening. But again, over time, CPI gets accounted for and we continue to see increases in property tax, just not as much as what was pre-interest rate rise. Also, if you recall, after the Great Recession or during the Great Recession, the assessor reduced property tax by twenty percent, assessed value by twenty percent across the board. What that meant was assuming property tax went up, and it did, you can, you can go back and reassess back to the higher levels. Well, we basically have recaptured all of that reduction in property tax right after the Great Recession. That's basically happened. Because what we were seeing right after was growth of sixty eight percent in those early twenty years. Now we're basically growing at a little bit over inflation, about four percent. COT, we actually get more revenue up per dollar. We get ten cents per dollar. Unfortunately for us, and I know I've mentioned it several times, so COVID happened, but right before COVID, this number was about two point five million dollars. The projection in the, in the previous long-term financial plan was near the three million dollars by this point in time. Obviously, COVID did happen. It dropped to one point six million. It's been improving. Obviously, we've gone back to two point two, but it's been hovering around two point two. I know the Pleasant Hill Transportation Proven, uh, GID is working on improving our occupancy rates. But again, this has been a slow climb. It also has the most room to grow as well. There is capacity here to hopefully reach back to at least pre-COVID levels of two point five at some point. And hopefully, even though the projections of three million dollars, that's at a future date. But what I gotta do is I still gotta be relatively conservative. So you're basically seeing a two percent growth rate regards to COT, at least for now. Flipping the coin, taking a look at expenditures, again, about thirty million dollars in twenty three, twenty four, about almost thirty three point seven million, twenty four, twenty five, and thirty five million dollars in twenty five, twenty six. As I kind of mentioned during the long-term financial plan, our biggest cost is salary benefits to provide that public service at sixty two percent of our total budget. The next highest cost is that person funded actual liability payment, fourteen percent, which goes from about three point nine million up to almost five million dollars by the time we get to twenty five, twenty six. The other thing I want to touch on here, they, they kind of go hand in hand, is other expenses and transfers out. The question might be, hey, why is other expenses going from one point four to two point, almost two point two million? The reason for that is, one of the things that we used to do in the transfers out section is we used to transfer out a lot of the information technology expenses, transferred it out and put it into the city hall as well as the PD technology funds. In theory, that's supposed to be more for capital replacement. So what we're trying to do is bringing some of that ongoing recurring cost back into the general fund, which we're seeing anyway. So for example, Microsoft Office three sixty five, that's an ongoing recurring cost. It really shouldn't be a capital replacement cost. So we're bringing some of that cost back into the general fund where I believe it belongs. So the transfer is out, it's reduced, the other expenses are going up. Now, there are some IT needs in the coming years. We have, we have some servers that we need to replace, both in IT, both at City Hall and at PD. But that's what's happening with other expenses. It's really bringing it back, those other expenses back into the general fund where it belongs. The last thing that I know I've touched on this before is, is insurance. If we were to go back four or five years, this number was closer to seven hundred thousand dollars. It's about one point four million dollars in the current year and it's only going up to one point five million dollars next year. Now, we're part of a joint powers authority pool with other cities in regards to insurance. The actual pool itself actually saw an increase of about fourteen percent overall in premiums. The one thing that the city has done really well, I'll, I'll thank the public works department, I'll thank the HR department, I'll thank the police department. One of the things that has, has a huge factor in what insurance does, as the mayor probably would notice, is what is your experience? Just like if, just like your own car insurance, if you have a lot of accidents, your premiums are going to be sky high. Same thing when it comes to insurance for cities. If you have a lot of workers comp claims, general liability claims, your, your, your insurance claims are going to go sky high. There, we have cities in the, in the pool that are seeing that because of the claims. The, the city's experience has been, this is real wood, I'm gonna knock on it, has been fairly good the last several years and it's actually brought our cost of seeing a, seeing a fourteen percent premium increase. We only saw basically a three percent increase. The assumption is it will increase fifteen percent because it's really what it has been. We just been at We just been at, we've just been really good about managing those premium, those claims. Apologize for the small font, but this is just taking a look expenditures and just breaking it down by departments. Again, the total numbers don't change. It's just really looking at it, uh, looking at by departments. Obviously, our largest one is public safety. It's forty two percent. Uh, that represents all of our sworn officers as well as our our dispatchers. Our our next largest cost is non departmental at fifteen percent. Again, non departmental includes the fourteen percent for the person funded actual liability. So fourteen percent of that, we already know what it is. The next one is public works, which is a combination of both maintenance and engineering at thirteen percent. And then we have the other one I obviously have to mention is finance and I T. I'll just say I did not get a salary increase to not to that level from one point five million to two point four million. Again, that's what I was talking about earlier. It's bringing back that I T cost back into the general fund and not transferring it out. That's really what the increases that you're seeing. Um, as I've mentioned several times, again, that per se way all cost of of uh, almost nearly five million dollars by year. It's it's fifteen percent of our budget. Even if we could do it, if I could get rid of finance, I T and H R, uh, if we could provide that sort of, that basically is what the per se way all cost is to the city of Pleasant Hill right now. I know you've seen this slide before as part of the long term financial plan, wanted to bring this up one more time. Is you're basically seeing that per se way all go from about three point nine million to basically six million dollars. The only thing I I'll just keep mentioning is the curve itself. So basically, you're you're seeing it peak out at about in the in the early twenty thirties and then starts ramping down. As I kind of mentioned during the long term financial plan, it really is because when the governor adopted Pension Reform Act this couple of years, they basically had to put all that unfunded liability in a number and you had to pay it off over a thirty year horizon. There was a ramp up of five years and a ramp down at the end of five years. And that's why you're seeing the down on the down and the twenty thirty five, thirty six, thirty six, thirty seven is that downward trend. What I will say is all these numbers depend on what Calpers does on their investment return. Their goal was six point eight percent. If they hit it, these are the most likely, these are the numbers you would see. If it's higher, uh, obviously the numbers themselves would go down, but the curve itself would still basically stay the same. Same thing, if they don't hit their target, this curve will basically stay the same. Will peak out and eventually, uh, not getting knocking wood, we'll we'll see someday, but it's not till twenty thirty seven, twenty thirty eight. The only thing I want to point out on the slide again, we showed this on the long term financial plan. Even those those numbers are big that we have to write. The average amount that the retiree gets is about thirty three thousand dollars for miscellaneous employees. Again, miscellaneous employees is anyone that's not a police officer or retired police officer. And then safety is about fifty six thousand dollars a year for for retired police officers. So that check we write out is relatively big, I will admit that. But the amount that the retirees are getting on an annual basis is not is not a huge number. And then the other points that has always been important is now the city of Pleasant Hill, like most municipalities, we don't provide for social security, there's no social security benefit, at least through the city. And then we don't, and one of the things that's unique for Pleasant Hill, unlike some of our neighboring cities, we don't provide for retired medical. So that could be even a much larger cost for some of our neighbors. I know I showed this two years ago, uh, but we have a couple of newer council members. Um, so I wanted to just talk about some of the things that U S City Council have done in the past, as well as some of the other actions. So back in November two thousand and eleven, the city council used to be something called employer paid member contribution or A P M C. What that meant was for labor negotiations, the city would actually pay for the employee portion of of pension cost. Most of that is phased out due to negotiations. It used to be seven percent for miscellaneous employees, nine percent for public safety. Employees today pay for their full share of the employee portion. At the same time, in twenty twelve, after the Great Recession, the council could see how much pension costs was impacting the city. They adopted what they could do at that point, which is a tier two. So for example, myself, I am a tier two miscellaneous employee. So for what that basically means is classic employees got two percent at fifty five. So when you turn fifty five, you get two percent for every year of service that you that you work for Pleasant Hill. The tier two was a two percent at sixty. So instead of fifty five, I I have to hit sixty before I get two percent for every year. If I retire before sixty, it's it's pro raid slightly less. So it's also say if I retire fifty five, for example, it might be one point six instead of instead of two percent. And then Governor Brown also was seeing the impacts of 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 pension cost. And he did a statewide pension reform act and he created a third, in essence, a third tier. So instead of two at sixty, it's two at sixty two for all new hires after January twenty thirteen. So those are the new tiers that we have. And then in twenty thirteen, what this council also did was they refinanced the Calpers Safety Side Fund. Basically, what they what what had happened was in back in two thousand and three, uh, they get the Calpers got rid of these, every city had its own little savings account in Calpers. They put everyone into a big savings account. But with that, when that happened, it created a liability for most cities, including including Pleasant Hill. Now, the benefit to the side fund was it was a set dollar amount with a set interest rate. At the time, it was seven point, I believe, seven point eight percent. The city refinanced it to three point four percent and saved one point three million dollars. The difference between that and the unfunded liability we're doing dealing with now is that number does change based on investment gains and losses. It's not a set number, it's not necessarily a set percentage. And then last but not least, and again, I kind of mentioned this at the long term financial plan, you council dot bill on a section one fifteen trust. We transferred a million dollars of the of the reserve into it as well as we put an additional three hundred thousand dollars earlier this calendar year. These are the questions I normally get from council as well from the public about Calpers. Can we leave? Yes, but I I put a big but next to it because it really is a big but. Uh, we would basically have to, as soon as you council decided to say, Eric, let's get out of Calpers. After we submitted our paperwork, we would just need to write a check to Calpers for somewhere between one hundred and two hundred billion dollars. At the same time, we'd obviously have to create a new retirement system. Whatever that would be, I have to talk about that with the different bargaining groups very hard. Now, when we did this two years ago, I will say this, it was a hundred and fifty million to three hundred million. So the number has gone down, um, but I don't have that that amount of money to write that check. Then the next question I normally get is, okay, Eric, I get it. We can't write a hundred million dollar check. Can't we just go ahead and give new employees a four one K plan? All the all the old employees, I get it, I can't change them. They maintain their pension status in Calpers. No, Calpers really puts handcuffs on you. You're either in or you're out. It's like the mob. Um, and and in this case, so we can't do, we can provide an enhancement in the sense of before when we came when, but we cannot substitute it for new hires unless you write that big check to Calpers. And then really, so what else can we really change? And as I kind of mentioned, the biggest changes council's already done for the most part. It really takes the state budgets later to make, uh, some of them, some of the bigger financial changes to to Calpers. One of the things I know I've mentioned, uh, to the to the council, at least at budget, maybe one of the biggest changes they could do, but no one has an appetite for this is is right now, there's an automatic two percent cost of living adjustment in regards to pension, no matter what the funded status. If you're asking me as a finance manager, if we're not anywhere near ninety percent funded status, the two percent is frozen until we get close. That would actually be the biggest change when I asked actuaries, uh, even for example, Bartel did it our actuary a few years ago. In theory, that's what they said would be the biggest number changer, uh, but nobody wants to take that on. Just taking a look at fund balance and the the city's reserve policy. So the reserve policy is is ten million dollars. So twenty twenty four, obviously, we ended about thirteen point seven. We still obviously have the ten million dollar reserve by twenty twenty five, we were slightly over ten million. And assuming we spend every dollar and we receive every dollar that the revenue states will be, will drop below ten million dollars by fiscal year twenty twenty six. So what steps has council taken or what have we done? As I kind of mentioned, we we've established a section one fifteen trust. We we've put in a million dollars and additional three hundred thousand. The balance is about one point four million, so it has interest income of about a hundred thousand, which is great. Unfortunately, if council directed me to, we basically absorbed that, that the increase in the next two years based on that on that one point four million dollar balance. The master fee schedule, which you just approved, you know, now we're back to full cost recovery. As Ross kind of mentioned, there's about a couple hundred thousand dollars still, you know, that we were able to adjust the budget for that for. Labor stability, the council has M O U agreements with all of the bargaining groups for the current year that we're now and the next two years. That's important because we were able to estimate what our, you know, our largest cost is, it's salaries. And thanks to the council as well to the bargaining group, our salary increases aren't near what some of our neighboring cities are. Um, so that is another good thing. As I kind of mentioned, there are seven frozen positions in the city, which represents about nine hundred thousand dollars. And then last but not least, again, you the council took action a few weeks ago regarding an election for assessment district twenty twenty two to hopefully achieve a cost recovery in those districts as well. And the other box, I'm I'm not going to dwell on that much this evening. But as I promised, the budget committee, as well as I promised council, is we're going to update the budget. Uh, I'm sorry, the long term financial plan and the off year, so next year. With this budget as well as the updated numbers, we'll bring it back and see where we're at and see if we need to take any additional steps at that point in time. Just to touch on some of the other funds, Measure K, even though it's, uh, it is a general, part of the general fund was a general sales tax. We do account for separately. Obviously, we have the Measure K committee as well. Obviously, that's for streets and storm drain, uh, constructing the library, uh, as well as other projects that the council deems a priority. There's revenues of about four, five point six million, twenty four, twenty five, five point seven, twenty five, twenty six. Again, we we what the new thing that's being added this year is really that just the library operations and maintenance. So now we are, we fully own that library, we are operating that library from the Monday hours that we use ARPA money for, uh, to fully staffing, uh, a building trades worker, a maintenance worker and a part of an I T person for the functioning of the library. The debt service obviously had two and a two and a half million dollars. As well as we continue to fund streets and roads, storm drain, head bike. And then new this year, and and we'll talk about that during, uh, her presentation in the C I Ps, some city projects of about one point seven five million. Just a reminder, we'll see it on the next slide. Uh, the council advanced or used ARPA funds for some of the storm drain work. Over a million dollars in storm drain improvements, so some of that for the Measure K dollars, we need to basically do improvements to the P D roof as well as the fund account that you moved for a few months ago. ARPA funds, we've basically, the city received eight point three million. The the main thing I want to just touch on on this slide is is the term obligation is 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 the U S Treasury keeps changing it. If you were to ask me a month ago, obligation meant if we didn't have a contract in place, it is not obligated. That they're changing that term and they're modifying it slightly. The plan was basically is what my plan was, I didn't want to have to give any of this money back. So any of the remaining residual amounts that we have in ARPA, I was going to put it into the government services bucket, which the council authorized when we we did this two years ago, uh, was government services is really any general government expense. So I could use it for, for example, for police officers' salary benefit costs. Um, anything that is general fund related, I could use that for. And what I want to do was use up the remaining ARPA funds and not have to give it back. And that's still the plan right now. I know that they're refining that term obligation. Uh, a lot of municipalities don't like the fact that it has to be a contract in place, but I'm still treating it that way. Sorry, it's a little small, uh, but the top two projects as well, as mentioned earlier, almost one point nine million dollars in in storm drain work. Gregory Gardens and Diablo View that the council approved. What the projects that the larger projects are still going on right now is the underground storage tank at P D, which we have to do by state mandate. We also obviously the city hall haunted fountain project at a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. And the only one that hasn't, uh, it's come to, we we've brought it up to council as well as the budget committee, is the backup generator. So you see if we're about seven hundred thousand dollars. It's a generator both at the Corporation Yard as well at City Hall. So that in case the power goes out, we do have backup generators. I know that the public researcher is working on finalizing an R F P as well as working on a cost sharing agreement with the Park District. So that we're not at the full burden of that cost. So seven hundred thousand, I know it's a little bit more than that, but that's the full cost of of both generators. It will be less, uh, once those, once the public record finalizes those agreements with the working right. And then, as I kind of mentioned, the last little bucket, about two hundred fifty thousand government services. That's really what's left that assuming, uh, I pretty much want to use that up and not have to give any of that back to the to the Fed. That pretty much wraps up my presentation this evening. I want to thank all the work done by all the the different departments for helping me put this together. I want to thank Ross, that you did an amazing job, as well as, uh, the Master Feast schedule presentation that you just heard. I want to thank Juanita. She took over Danielle's role in some of the, making the the document readable and pretty. Um, so I want to thank her for all the hours that she put in that. I'll take any questions and comments that you had, as I mentioned earlier, the budget committee reviewed this, uh, earlier in June and hopefully adoption of the Miami budget.
Great, thank you. I'll let you catch your breath for a minute. Nice presentation. Um, and also kudos to, uh, again, to Vice Mayor Noack and Councilmember Flaherty for serving on the Budget Committee and seeing multiple visions of this, um, or before it gets to us. So we appreciate that and our staff as well. Um, City of Pleasant Hill, we may be small, but we're mighty, right? As I think is the phrase. Um, so there's a lot that do more than their lion's share of work. Um, and we, you know, have a few of those openings, but, um, you know, we're getting through it and we're we're working hard and, uh, it's keeping the city afloat right now. So I appreciate all of that. I'll open up to the council. Uh, anyone who wants to start, I'll start with the Councilmember Flaherty, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Eric. Uh, appreciate the refinement of the assumptions that you utilize, particularly as it related to the staffing. Um, and I think that helps refine. Uh, when we did the presentation at Budget, we did have the H D L presentation and we talked about making that presentation available to the public. Is that just available through the video of that meeting or is the hard copy of that presentation attached anywhere?
Uh, we could, we could make that presentation available to the public as well.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's anything confidential about it. I think it's just educational to see how the estimates are made for, uh, the sales tax, sales and use tax projections. And we do thank the mayor for asking for that. Anyway.
I'm gonna get it every now.
So, uh, if you could go back to the slide that shows, it was before the unfunded liability slide. Maybe it was after that, that one, go back, that one. Sort of the Pleasantville version of our fiscal cliff. Um, so the way things, if everything goes as projected, at some point in the not too distant future, we will have used up all of our reserves, uh, in an effort to stay ahead of the unfunded liability. The huge bill the state keeps sending us every year. So, uh, this is really common for a future council. At what point should a future council be looking at it? Because everything could change, it could get better, it could get worse, right? And we're all hoping for the better, uh, the cost savings, revenue enhancements, all that. But at some point, we're going to be at a point where we're clearly, uh, our expenditures are not only exceeding our revenue, but will have used up our reserve. So at what point in time should a future council be really looking at that inflection point and making some decisions on what to do?
So best practices would tell you that you would, we would need to have about two months of cash flow on hand. So based on that, we would, you know, based on the thirty plus million dollar budget, we're looking at six to seven million dollars that we need to have on hand. So if this actually played out, so by twenty twenty six, we would need to look, start looking at doing something uh, to rebalance this budget, uh, to to at least maintain us at that eight million dollar level.
Keep that in mind, uh, in twenty twenty six. Uh, I mean, I'm sure the council will be following this closely as you will, uh, be guiding the council. But certainly within a couple of fiscal years, uh, there should be a hard look made at as to either revenue enhancement or expenditure reduction or a combination of both. It's my editorial comment.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the editorial, Captain. Vice Mayor Noack, yeah, if you come.
Yeah. Yeah, we've, we've been through this a couple of times. So, um, one, I I know you noted that the the new fee schedule is included in here to the tune of two hundred thousand, but I think Ross said it was three hundred?
We we did a range.
Okay. Um, so I just, uh, I just wanted to clarify that assumption and that, um, I gotta put my reading glasses on for my notes, sorry. Um, and that, and the sales tax assumptions, we're not assuming anything regarding the two big box stores that are not filled.
I I believe, and we have Ken from H L on the line, uh, there's going to be some hopefully improvement in those, but I'll let Ken speak for himself.
Hi, Ken.
Yes, uh, council member, uh, we have made, we've certainly taken out the revenue related to the former tenants of those locations. And, um, working with your economic development and finance staff would anticipate, uh, new revenues coming. But we, we typically don't count on that until there's a certainty that space is actually going to be occupied and open. So.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure that they weren't included in the numbers so that there was some upside potential to the extent that those leases, somehow those properties are leased out. Um, so I wanted to make, and the same with T O T, right? I mean, there we've got some upside on the revenue side. Um, you know, and and we've seen, having been, Tim and I have been on the Budget Committee beside the one year Matt was in there.
Did I have one good idea?
Yeah, for ten, for ten years or so, we've seen this chart pretty consistently and that the fist keeps moving out, thank heaven. Pretty consistently and that keeps moving out, thank heaven. So while it looks really dire, we again this year will not be fully staffed because. The year starts July one and there's no way we're getting fully staffed by July one. So. That number is going to be, those expense numbers are already going to be a little overstated, right?
Right. The, the, as the council's aware, the, the budget is a planning document and you're right, we will be under budget on July one.
I just want people to understand, it's a planning document, but I want people to be realistic about. Are we going to fall off the cliff in 2026? We've got to certainly start addressing some of these things if. Some of these other things don't come to fruition like the TOT and, and getting sales tax revenues from. New, new tenants in these buildings and things like that. So. We need to address those things and certainly keep an eye on them, but I just want. People to understand the realities and the practicalities. Of a planning number versus a realistic number. I think this year originally the budget was also a deficit of.
One point five million?
One point five million and we're sitting at a deficit of a hundred thousand. So I want, I, I just want to put that into context. So. It's not something I don't want to say we shouldn't be ignoring this. I just want people to understand. The difference between a planning document and really what happens here. And we always have in the past also made small expense adjustments as well when things are not looking good. And so. I'm counting on our city manager to keep an eye on that as, as well. Let me see, what else I have to say? I, I think that's, I think that's it. I mean, I appreciate all the work that goes into this and it's really important. And I think it's really important. I'm glad we talked about the unfunded liability. So many people say, you know, what can you do about this? And there's not much. We can. Do the 115 trust, we could prepay, but it's about the same whether we put it into the trust or the, or the prepay. And it's something everybody's, most everybody, there's some cities that don't have to address this, but a lot of them are going through this. And as you said, a lot of them have retirement, retiree medical that makes it even worse. So we have to keep an eye on it, but it's not, there's not a whole lot we can do about that. And I think it's really important for people to understand that. That's it for my comments.
Let me just curtail on one of Vice Mayor Noak's comments. And I, and I think you mentioned in your presentation, I saw it here that. By the staffing not being fully staffed and some of those things, it was about nine hundred thousand dollars was the figure. That you were kind of using, is that correct?
It's the frozen position.
Yeah, the frozen or.
Oh, yeah. So we have.
Using full Mac, full married, you know, when you're talking about that. Is that right?
So frozen position slightly, is a little slightly different. It says, for example, we, we froze a, a maintenance worker too. It just means, for example, we budget, so in the, you, you have authorized a maintenance worker too. So we budget it for. Whatever that number is, I'll just make up a number, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. But since it's frozen, I then subtract a hundred fifty thousand dollars because it's frozen. So the net impact to the budget is zero, but it's still an authorized FTE. When I, we're talking about the, the budget itself is when we have, or we're fully staffed. So as, as Vice Mayor Noak mentioned. I'm assuming we have forty five officers. As she, as she stated, we don't have forty five officers and we won't have forty five officers on July one. We will have some savings because I assume some number, whether, I assume that they would be hired. I assume a salary and benefit number for them at different tiers. So we know that we'll probably have some salary savings already because they are not, we're not fully staffed in the police department.
Thank you.
There is some offset there, though. I've been reminded that there's a little bit of overtime that comes into play to the extent we're not fully staffed, but. I, I just, I just want to be realistic about. Where are the numbers?
No, I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments. Not, this isn't a doom and gloom report by any stretch. There's lots of reasons to have a positive outlook. And hope things will improve, but as we've talked about many times, hope is not a strategy. But experience tells us that we have done better than our budget, but it's mostly because of. The fact that we're not fully staffed for the most part. So there's a built in sort of cushion. That makes us look better at, at budget year end than we project. We also have a hotel entitled that has yet to be constructed. That if that does come to fruition, should add to the, the transient, transient occupancy tax projection. But that's not included in this budget cycle. There's not, no revenue anticipated from that in this biennial budget, correct?
Correct.
Right. So that could happen. The, and, and as you've told us many times, except for the unfunded liability, we're looking really good. Right? I mean, our expenses are incredibly well managed. Our revenue is very good for a city our size. Which is weighed down by this unfunded liability, which is an albatross over which we have very little control. Budget Committee has, you know, spent a lot of time, talked with a lot of consultants, looking for ways to sort of stay ahead of that curve. By creating the 115 trust, talking about ways of, you know, as we did with the side fund some years ago. Is a way to like fix it, refinance it, prepay it. And it's just too uncertain to, to do anything other than just save money, as much money as we can. To either even out those budget years where our revenue isn't going to be sufficient. And, and when our, our, our reserves may be in jeopardy to dip into that 115 trust, even out those payments. But in any event, this is incredibly hard work, I know, and you've spent tremendous amount of hours, you and Ross and. The rest of the executive team and all the staff. So I do appreciate it. But, you know, again, my comment is to make sure that the next council really keeps their eye on. The budget and the revenue and expenditures. Because this is the hardest part, I think, about being on city council is managing the finances and managing the, the forward outlook. And just really encouraging those to learn it, follow it and be vigilant. Thank you.
Councilmember Ches, you have your head up?
Yeah, thank you. I have two questions in particular, one about CIP and the other one about sales tax. First with sales tax. Is there a way, kind of dovetailing on, on, on Vice Mayor Noak's question. Around the, the two big boxes, can, is there, when you look at the sales tax numbers. Can, can we associate a percentage of down revenue based on those two boxes being empty? So like, for example, can you look at that, that total and say, oh, X percent of that. Is due to those two big boxes being empty? Is that possible? Is it, or is it maybe just not very, not as much as we would think? So like the average citizen's looking at that going, well, if we've, you know, our sales tax would climb, you know, X percent, it'd be huge if those two, these things were full. That may not be the case at all, or it could be. That's why I'm asking.
I actually know the number off the top of my head. I'm just still, I'm trying to remember. I'm looking at Ken a little bit if I can actually say that number because normally that's. The actual numbers are normally private and are withheld.
Okay.
But I could add, Eric, I think, I think to the Councilmember's question, the two vacancies are fairly nominal to the overall total. You have other taxpayers that are more significant in your tax base, and I'm not minimizing the loss of those two stores. But they, they aren't a, a big difference between what is presented. And what would have been presented had those two businesses still been in place.
So, thank you. So to imply that if those, that those two stores were full. The, the, the sales tax budget would be completely different is erroneous, right? That's not, that's not true. It's nominal. Okay.
Correct. I mean, I would say this, but, but both those box stores pre-COVID did bring in a, 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 a reasonable revenue number. I'll, I'll say it that way.
Sure.
After COVID, obviously, some of the big box stores obviously took a hit. But I will just say that those, they did actually bring in a decent number. I won't, I won't quite say, to me, it's not, I know what the number is. To me, it's not nominal. But they did bring in a reasonable number, at least in my mind. It, it wouldn't wipe out the budget, no. It does not solve that problem, but it was, it was a reasonable number, at least for me.
Okay. The other question, by May?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Uh, is around the CIP and with city funded projects in particular, right? We're getting into 2026 and, and things maybe aren't this sunny. Do, what, is that a lever that the city would pull in terms of pulling those projects or just freezing them for the time being? Or, or, or you already have those budgeted and, and how would that work as a, as a lever to change things?
No, because, and, and Paul, we're sorry, I can talk more about this in a minute, but most of our CIP projects are, are grant funded, Measure K funded. There is, in, in pre Measure K days, we used to provide a little over a million dollars of general fund monies. Into, for stream improvements, for example. That would have been in theory a lever we could have pulled pre Measure K.
Okay.
Today, we, we don't put, very little of it is actually general fund anymore. It really is being funded by all different grant sources from Measure K, Measure J, Fed, the state, and, and very little from general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Benson.
I have a comment and a question. I watched the Budget Committee meeting. I was really impressed by the presentation by HDL. I learned, learned a lot about the sales tax. So I agree with Councilmember Flaherty, that should be made available to the public. It actually is available on YouTube. I like it the way it is as a meeting because the public can see the back and forth between the council members and staff about. Brainstorming ways to address some of these issues. So I, I was very impressed by that. My question is, you were showing the distribution of the property tax. And wrecking parks get slightly more than the city. Is there a background on that?
Most of those agreements, I will be honest, predate most of us.
I would say all of us.
And, and normally the question I would normally get from the council as well as the public is. Eric, we provide a, a, a pretty significant public service to the city. How do we get more than the five point? Seven cents compared to, for example, the parking red ticks are at five point nine. The reality is, if you, if you want more, you need to get one of the other entities to give you that portion. The reality is they don't have a reason to give you more. The bulk of it obviously goes to the schools. So over almost fifty two, fifty two cents goes to. Either Mount Diablo Unified or K through twelve or to the community college. Again, it really is very hard to change these percentages because that means they, somebody else must be willing to give up something for probably nothing, which is probably not going to happen.
Thank you.
All right. We'll open up public comment. Public's welcome to address the council this time. Do we have any speaker cards at this, this moment?
There are no speaker cards.
All right, with no speaker cards, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for further discussion. Go ahead.
I saw the Vice Mayor go on to.
No, 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 nope.
The French open here.
I, I just, I, I just wanted to also thank the Budget Committee. I have never sat on the Budget Committee here. I, I have on, in another agency and it, it is a, it's a lot of work. So thank you. To both of you for the work and, and to staff especially, and, and their work. One of the things that I really like about this budget, I mean, the way this is presented, is that it gives you accomplishments. And I think the reason why that's important is because when you see, people see this, you know, sixty two percent is going to staff. And, and I mean, you know, the, somebody who's maybe not. Super familiar with that is like, wow, that's a lot of, you know, that's a lot of money. And it is a lot of money. I'm not saying it's not, but the point is, is that. In this presentation, it tells you what, that, what, that, what each of these departments is up to and what they've accomplished. And, and, and what they're looking forward to doing down the road. And I think that's important. And I think that makes this. A very comprehensive and useful document. And if someone, you know, wanted, was, you know, really wanted to know this, this, you know, kind of what's going on in, in. In our city, this is, this is probably the one document, it's not going to just give you the numbers, it's going to give you accomplishments. And I think that's, I think that's a very, that's very important. And I, and I for one appreciate that. So thank you.
Right. Then Vice Mayor Noak.
I, I was just going to move approval of the budget.
Right. Vice Mayor Noak?
I have a comment.
A comment before your motion?
A revenue enhancement suggestion that I learned at our last Budget Committee meeting. That if you buy at a, let's say the Whole Foods in Concord, the sales tax goes to Concord. But if you have through a delivery service and delivered to your home here in Pleasant Hill, Pleasant Hill receives the sales tax. So I encourage all of you who shop outside of the city of Pleasant Hill, have your purchases delivered to your home in Pleasant Hill. I'm not sure Sustainable Country Cost would agree with that, but I think the economic development team could work on that suggestion. And also just to the follow up with the Councilmember Ches, we're a service organization. It is not unusual that the vast majority of our expenditures are paying the people who do deliver the service. I work in a service organization. The greatest portion of our budget is paying the people that deliver the services. So it's, it's not unusual at all. And with that, I'll second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Noak, second by Councilmember Flaherty. Maybe we have a roll call now, please.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Ches?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to item ten point three. Everybody good to go to ten point three? Do we need a little break? We're good? Take a break? Okay. We're going to take a, a ten minute break here, a brief bio break. And we'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you.
Need something to drink?
When I think my brother-in-law is going up next weekend. And then I think nobody goes for a while. So then I have some free rein. I'm planning going up in July.
We hired someone, I told him that graph.
Oh, yeah. Well, my sister won and her husband and what? And he sent me a list of issues. I'm like, will you take care of them? Hello, Marshall. How are you?
Fine.
How's the government academy going? Yeah? Yeah, there's a lot to learn. More than people realize.
I, you know. Oh. That gets everybody's attention. Wait for our colleague coming by. All right, it's eight eight thirty four. We'll reconvene the city council meeting. And we'll introduce, uh, open up, uh, item ten point three, which is a resolution approving fiscal years twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine capital improvement plan and expenditures for fiscal year twenty four and twenty five and fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And I'd like to invite our public works director, Ann James. Congratulations, by the way, uh, to introduce the item.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Rin, council members. Uh, tonight, I'm happy to present the city's capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine for your consideration and approval. Uh, so for the fiscal year twenty four, twenty nine capital improvement plan, we have a two-year budget that you'll be approving with a three-year forecast. So fiscal year twenty twenty six through twenty twenty nine are just a look ahead. Okay? Uh, for our two-year budget, we're proposing is a twenty six million, three seventy nine, one forty eight, of which almost nine million is the Contra Costa Boulevard project that's currently under construction. Nine million being the total cost, not the construction cost. Uh, just a quick overview of the approval process. We started out back in April with a draft, a very rough draft that we brought before the executive team. We asked them for their input. We asked them for their thoughts. Uh, you'll see a couple of projects in there from the planning division that they added into the capital improvement plan. Uh, we took it to the planning commission on May twenty eighth, and I'm happy to report they found our CIP consistent with the new general plan. Uh, it's the traffic safety commission saw it for June fourth. On June fourth, um, we just brought it forward to them to identify priority safety projects that would be coming up in the CIP. Um, the budget committee saw it on June fifth, and they reviewed the initial draft and recommended bringing it to council for your consideration for approval tonight. Um, our two-year CIP budget, and this is just a rough overview. Um, very little money coming from the general fund. There's one planning project for seventy five thousand dollars that is coming out of the general fund, and that is the only project in the two-year budget that is a general fund project. Uh, the remaining funds come the traffic mitigation fund, our gas tax fund, NPDS, uh, the city building fund, Measure J, grants, and our SB one gas tax money. And of course, Measure K funds and our ARPA funds. The other funding that you see at the end was funding for projects in the last budget cycle that didn't get completed. Or there was money left over that we rolled over into those programs. But again, not general fund money.
Could I ask you a question on that last column?
Yes.
The funding is in hand.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Funding is in hand. Um, so Measure K funded programs, this is not my favorite um, slide. It's worded a little funny where it says total two-year budget, eleven million dollars. That is not the money that's coming out of Measure K. That's just all the Measure K projects. And that eleven million dollars adds up to, that's what they cost. So for example, if you look under street resurfacing program for the two-year budget, we have about seven point five million, but only three million of that is Measure K funds. The rest is made up of SB one funds and gas tax funds and other funds. Um, the library maintenance, that is all Measure K. Um, we typically, it, we don't often put an operations sheet in our capital improvement program, but for transparency, so that people could see what the library maintenance cost was coming out of Measure K. We included a sheet in the last two budget cycles. Um, mostly for transparency. And we estimate that to be about one point oh nine two million. The storm drain improvement program. Um, so that one seven nine eight is money that's rolling forward left over from the storm drain program from the previous budget. We are not actually putting any um, Measure K funds in the storm drain program for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. That three eighty is for twenty five, twenty six. Uh, library Monday hours, uh, that number, five sixty four, three forty, we saw a dramatic increase in the Monday hours from two fifteen. I think it's two forty eight this year. And it also includes uh, money for the check-in checkout machine. And that is a technical term, the check-in checkout machine. Um, that's what the five fifty uh, five sixty four includes. And the same with the pet and bike program, that four fifty five is money that's rolling over that didn't get spent in the last budget cycle. There's no money going into bike and ped because we have such a rollover. We use that money for other funds. Uh, that two oh one is for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
Question?
Yes.
On the library maintenance, is that the anticipated half a million budget, you know, per year?
Yes, that's that's the anticipated, that is um.
It's two, but.
Well, it's a million for two years. It's almost five hundred thousand dollars, and that's all inclusive. It's the IT guy. It's the landscaper. It is the building maintenance. It's all the utilities. It's the insurance on the building. It's every cost that we um, it's every cost that, you know, we, the first, the last budget cycle, we came up with our best idea of what it would cost. Now we've really been able to dial in what it's exactly going to cost. And this year, um, the the library is now being staffed by staff. It's no longer under the warranty. Right? So um, all of the old, anytime anything happened, pretty much staff-wise for the last budget cycle, we did very little up until now, even the landscaping on the streetscape, as well as the library site, is now being completed by city staff. Where in the past, that was still being covered by the landscapers for the contractor.
Would you general with thumb that annual cost isn't going to go down?
No.
Be a cover increase based on?
No, it's not going to go down.
Thank you.
Uh, so maintenance improvement programs, uh, we have a street, street striping maintenance estimated to be about eighty thousand. Um, storm drain maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, traffic calming improvement program, city bridge maintenance, and annual creek maintenance. Just a note for the annual creek maintenance, uh, there, there's additional ten thousand dollars that was put in that fund this year because it's time to redo our five-year permit with fish and game. And that roughly costs us about uh, ten thousand dollars. That gives us the ability to go down on the abutments and do silt removal and cut back invasive line, invasive vines at our creeks. Um, I just want to talk real quick about storm drain maintenance. Um, if, for for those of you who've been on council for a while, you may recall that pre Measure K, we used to have in the CIP a project budget sheet for storm drain maintenance. And that is maintenance of our existing facilities. Anywhere that uh, we've identified there's a drainage issue of an existing facility, it would typically come out of maintenance. And we would mostly use NPDS funds for that. That's what they're there for. We're not, we can only use a very small percentage of NPDS funds for upgrades, improvements, new, new systems. Uh, so when Measure K happened, we, the engineering division put them all in one, one project sheet, storm drain maintenance program. And uh, this year, we've decided to separate them back out again because we're moving forward with a storm drain program for upgrades that follows our storm drain master plan. And so we thought it was significant that we have a separate sheet that basically addresses the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance that we're doing in the city that's separate from our program. Uh, so we'll be having two projects this year in the CIP, a maintenance project as well as a program project as far as storm drain goes. Um, the ADA improvement program and the sidewalk program will be working with the pond project to uh, redo the ADA walkway going into city hall. Uh, I just wanted to go down this real quick. This is, I'm not going to go through every budget sheet, sheet by sheet, but this is a good, this is a good overview of the projects that we'll be working on. Um, sign installation project. Um, PD working with our transportation manager did a full survey of the city. And they came up with a significant amount of signs that need to be replaced or repaired throughout the city. It made sense to put it out as a capital improvement project rather than have maintenance staff pick away at it one at a time. So that project will be happening. Um, I'm going to come back to the complete street study corridors. Um, in case you have any questions about transportation manager. The city hall pond and fountain rehabilitation project. That project is currently under design. It's at sixty five percent design, and we'll be meeting with the ad hoc committee and the the team next week so that we can move that project forward. It is funded um, almost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of ARPA funds. And the remaining funds are going to be coming from sidewalk, ADA, again, to do the walkway, and uh, Measure K funds. The police department roof replacement, uh, you may recall that the police department roof is at the end of its useful life. It was supposed to be replaced two years ago, and we've just been doing um, maintenance on it. So I'm happy to say we're going to be moving that project forward, and PD will be getting a new roof. Uh, city hall carpet replacement, I promise I am going to replace the carpets in the first fall, first floor offices this year. Uh, Tori Fujimoto feels very strongly that it gets done this year, and I promised him it would happen. Um, city hall, PSC and community center generators, Eric talked about that. Our finance manager talked about that briefly. Um, we've had a lot of power outages in the last two years, and it's become apparent that city hall, as well as PSC, uh, would benefit from having a backup generator. Uh, the city hall, PSC are both uh, buildings that will be activated as part of our EOC. In conversations with Wreckin Park and uh, actually, you know, trying to meet one of our city goals to partner with our partners. Uh, Wreckin Park has asked us if we could, um, we're going to split a generator, PSC and the community center generator. We've been working with um, can't remember the name of the company, CD Power. CD Power, they've come out and they've agreed uh, that we could, we, they can size a generator that will go between the outside of community center and the outside of PSC, and will service both buildings. I met with Wreckin Park last week, and they have agreed to split the cost with the city for the generator. I just don't have anything formal in writing yet, but Wreckin Park is happy to partner with us on that. So that will be, that seven fifty five number will go down maybe by two thirty out of the ARPA funds because that will be the, the money that's coming from Wreckin Park.
And I have a quick question.
Yeah.
On the generator, would that also service PD as well?
PD has a generator.
Already have one.
PD already has their own generator.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but they are getting a new electronic message board out in front of their building. Now that the Civic Taylor project is done, um, we're moving that project forward, something similar, smaller, but similar to what we have at city hall. So they can get their messaging out. Uh, Jabal Vista Water System Pump House Filter, that money is coming out of their funds uh, to put a filter at the pump at the twelve-inch main. The Taylor Boulevard Sidewalk Gap Closure Project, that one hundred thousand dollars is for design. Um, if you come from Ruth Drive up to Civic, and then you cross where we put in the new light, there's a gap in the sidewalk between that new light to Lucille. It's an old existing AC pathway on the south side of Taylor, and on the north side of Taylor, there's not a sidewalk at all. Um, that study, though, is to determine what's the best side of the street to put it on. And then we're going to go after um, some grant funds to put that piece of sidewalk in. Uh, but before we move forward, both sides have challenges. And before we really just gung ho go forward with the design, we'd like to have somebody take a look at it and tell us which is the best side of the street to put that gap closure on. Um, contract, the next projects, these are bike and ped projects, Contra Costa Canal Trail Westover Drive, uh, the Rapid Flash and Beacons Project, uh, another study at the trail crossing at Taylor. Citywide Traffic Data Collection Project, that money is a new project this year. The citywide, uh, it's very difficult to get grants these days without that type of data. Almost every grant we go after wants that type of data, and we've been chasing RFPs to get um, to have traffic companies come out and give us that data. So now we're going to have this project. Um, that's going to get us that data much quickly and make us much more competitive when we go forward with our grants. And the last two projects are, uh, the planning projects that I talked about earlier. The Pleasant Hill Climate Action Plan and the Pleasant Hill Underground Utility Study, both of them came up as a result of the new general plan. And they're being brought forward by the planning, the planning department. The um, climate action plan is coming out of Measure J. And like I said, they have one small project for seventy five thousand that is um, the underground utility study that's coming out of the general fund. So on top of these projects, we're going to have a street resurfacing project like we always do. We're going to have a storm drain program project like we always do, and we'll have one both years. And the storm drain program, and you can see in your project sheets, are following our storm drain master plan. They did the priority project listing that was outlined in the, in the master plan. Uh, two grant-funded projects right now, we have the Contra Costa Boulevard Improvement Project that's ongoing right now. Um, they're starting to take uh, the trees down along Contra Costa Boulevard. You've seen them moving forward. And that fifty thousand dollars, we applied for a grant for the Monument Boulevard Bike and Ped Improvement Project. Um, they, we weren't very competitive the first round, but we did, were successful in getting a fifty thousand dollar grant to make us more competitive, to go after some more money for that. And then I'm not going to go down this line by line, but I did want to tell you that staff, uh, we did the exercise, we went through every project that we were bringing forward and found it uh, to be in compliance with the new general plan. That's all this sheet says, but we did actually do the exercise and bring it to the planning commission. Um, so it looks like we're all over the new, new general plan. And then questions?
Right. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough. Uh, council members, any comments, questions?
Not even me.
You're like the transportation.
Yeah, I know, but.
We've seen it three times. I'm sorry.
Times I've seen, so.
Dream it up in your dreams, or you can do it on your own. All right, with that, we'll open a public comment on the ten point three. Public's allowed them to address the council this time. Uh, do we have any uh, speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
All right, with that, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ann for thorough report. Uh, and with that, I would move the item.
Motion by Councilmember Flaherty. Motion by Councilmember Flaherty?
I'll second it, the third time I've seen this, so I have.
Well, it gets better each time, though.
It gets better, well, it gets faster every time. I think Anne's doing that on behalf of me, so I don't fall asleep the third time.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Noack. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, with that being our last item for the evening, I will adjourn this meeting with our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be July 1st, 2024. And we hope to see you out this Wednesday at our Juneteenth Celebration at City Hall. Have a good evening.
Thank you.